Go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers, and an automatic external defibrillator is available on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, no, you don't, Mike. We'll begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, and Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, November 18th, 2014, as a date for the hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property.
Motion approved, Andy.
Second. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Item C, citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions. There are two. Item D, approving corrections for errors in assessment in personal property, and Resolution E, application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Motion approved, Andy.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Public hearing. There's one item, a public hearing on resolution setting final and corrected tax rates for necessary taxes as provided by Nebraska Statute 7716-0102. Mr. Lorenz.
Yeah, these corrections, there's just two groups of them. One, and this was set up on October 7th, we initially approved all of them, and, you know, there's over 300 of them, so sometimes there's clerical errors that occur, and it's in the statutes to correct them, and so that's what these are. The first set applies to the city of Omaha, which is a, most of these, you know, there's a formula and a computer generated, but the city of Omaha has a different assumption under collection, so it's a manual adjustment. And so, we had it, but in the final copy, it was just the computer-generated. So this is just the correction of that, and it's consistent with what the people of Omaha, the finance people of Omaha have calculated. And the second one is just an SID adjustment that they made a late correction to, so these, this should be it for the levies on this year.
Okay.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? The public hearing, I'll close the public hearing.
Sorry. Motion to close.
That's my problem.
Motion to close the public hearing.
The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I will second.
All right. Please vote.
I left the engine running, so I'll get out of here.
Motion passes.
There's one resolution. Item G, resolution approving the acceptance of late homestead exemption applications filed between July 1, 2014, and July 21st, 2014. There's a list of three, Shirley Jenkins, Willie Neville, and Elizabeth Whithelme. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Does that include adjournment?
Yes, it does.
Motion passes.
Next, we'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Noxious Weed Control Authority. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Noxious Weed Control Authority meeting held on Tuesday, January 28th, 2014.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Can we amend it to be noxious television commercials, too?
Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Noxious Weed Control Authority about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, resolution placing special assessments on property in Douglas County. Do you have the list in your folders?
Motion to approve.
Does that include adjournment?
Add adjournment.
Second. Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
We will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Tusha, Madam Chair.
Here. On here, the item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 21st, and the tri-county meeting held Thursday, October 23rd, we'll need to remove that, the tri-county meeting part, because the minutes were not done yet for that. So it's just the approval of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, October 21st.
Motion to approve.
Sorry. Does that include approval of claims submitted for payment as well?
Yes.
A and B. Okay.
Motion passes.
Consent agenda, items A through U for total of 21 items.
Motion approved.
Is there any questions or comments? Please vote.
Could we get a second?
Oh.
I'll second.
Please vote.
We're just buzzing right along.
Yes, we are. Motion passes.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations. We do have one presentation, the Ebola presentation and update by Douglas County Health Director, Director Adi Por, and this actually should be brought by Commissioner PJ Morgan and not me, so thank you, Commissioner Morgan, for asking for this. And Adi?
Thank you.
All yours.
Good morning, Adi. Here's some positive things that you're working on, and I thought it'd be good for the public to hear those comments and to hear from you because of the work you've been doing in your department.
Thank you. Thank you all, Commissioners, and I think we all are overloaded with information about Ebola, but sometimes it is the best to hear what science really tells us. So I'll go through this pretty quickly. I have about 20 slides, so I hope Commissioner Boyle, the car is still running when you go out there, so I try to be really quick. It will be. Okay. So at this time, there are really three countries that we are concerned about, and three countries in West Africa only. They are Guinea, Liberia, and Sierra Leone. We do have a case over the last two days of a two-year-old that died in Mali, which is just next to Guinea, actually, and what happened is the grandma and the little child went over to Guinea, and that's probably where the transmission occurred. Right now, as of October 24th, we have more than 10,000 cases. We have close to 5,000 deaths, and I tell you, it just goes up. It doesn't change. It doesn't level off. So that, those are the facts. This slide I want to show you quickly, and it really has one purpose. There are several different species of Ebola virus. First of all, this is a virus, not a bacteria. It's a virus, and there are five different species. And why that is important, I always have people asking me, once I have recovered from this virus, am I immune? And the answer is, you are immune from the specific species that you have been exposed to, but there are four other Ebola species, and you are not immune from those. Now, the stars just mean that those type of species have human transmission, and this western Ebola virus has only been found in the animal environment. Marburg virus, we often hear about it, it's also a species of the same, from the same family. This is a slide, people ask, how did this get started? And we know it probably started in March, and we now think again that this virus comes from our animal, animal world, so to say, and we think the species that actually carries the Ebola virus is a bat. And it is the bat that potentially not only infected animals in the circle that you see here, but through close connection with human, that bat contaminated or contracted the first human. And it is the first human then where the human-to-human transmission occurred. So where you started with an animal, the animal had contact with a human, and human-to-human transmission occurred since then. These are some facts that you have heard, but it always warrants repeating. The virus is transmitted only through direct contact, through broken skin or mucous membrane. Therefore, a sick person's blood or body fluid have to come in contact with you, and you then have to make contact with your mucous membranes, which could be your eyes, your nose, or a break that you have in the skin. Direct contact through broken skin of a sick person.
Could I ask?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm just curious, you know, we've heard how someone's flying, and then they're trying to contact all the people that were on that plane, and what you just said, you know, about the direct contact, et cetera, you're not going to get it, as you might, cold flying on an airplane.
It's not airborne.
Tell us about why they would be contacting all the people that were on the airplane, then.
You know, that is, and we have heard the sentence now a lot, abundance of caution. And what this is, you are starting, public health, in this case, in our case, it would be the health department, is starting to monitor those individuals. And so, when you have contact, when you know who has been sitting around you, two rows before, in front of you, two rows in back of you, you can start saying, are you having symptoms? Do you have ABC? Because early identification of a person who becomes sick is important. Now, why in the airport? Because you are correct. Now, I just said, it is not airborne. There is a potential, let's say I am sneezing, and you are in front of me, I am sneezing right into your face, so to say. You then touch that sneezing again and put it in your eyes. There is a slight risk. We never say there is no risk. That's why the contact investigation is so important. It is what we call monitoring those individuals, so that the first sign of illness, that person gets isolated and gets into testing and potentially care.
Okay.
This shows you a little bit, it's another slide of showing how contagious or not contagious Ebola is. And what you see here, if you have one individual who is infected with measles, they potentially been, on an average, infect 18 other people. So that's highly infectious. If you have a person with HIV, potentially four people could be infected from that one infected individual. However, the experience with Ebola has shown us that from one infected individual, the average is two people are getting infected. So again, that shows you the degree of contagiousness. These are just the facts, and this poster has been around and is really distributed in West Africa very much so. You can get Ebola through the air, as we just discussed, that you can get it through water, and you can get it through food. Now, food, I want to make one exception, and that is, if some of you now are eating bush meat that comes from West Africa, then there could be a potential. I don't think we do that type of eating around here. As a matter of fact, it is not allowed. What is the incubation period? The incubation period, from the time you are exposed until you actually show symptoms, and we have a range from two days to 21 days. When we look back at all the outbreaks of Ebola since 1976, when the first Ebola outbreak was identified, these are the data. That's science. That's what we have learned from all of this. So between two to 20 days. After 20 days, it is very unlikely, do we say never? No, we don't. But it's very unlikely that you have had an exposure, and after 21 days, you don't have any signs and symptoms. You probably don't have Ebola, and you won't get Ebola. It's a very abrupt onset, meaning, and we have heard this now in the news, you feel fine the next day and the day, and the next day you have a fever, headache, chills. These typical flu-like symptoms. In most of the cases, more than 90%, a fever does exist. So the fever is usually the first symptom. The next level of symptoms is, which would occur a little bit into the illness, is GI symptoms, most common vomiting and diarrhea and abdominal pain. When you listen to, some of you may have listened to 60 Minutes, where they had a report of some of the nurses who took care of Mr. Duncan down in Texas. One of the nurses said, over 20 years I have taken care of patients, I have never seen anybody who generated so much diarrhea as Mr. Duncan. These are liters by liters a day. The diarrhea is enormous. That's why the important thing is to replenish that fluid and replenish the salts, or what we call the electrolytes. That's what we are seeing, what the treatment is nowadays. The hemorrhagic symptoms, like we often see in the movies, are really very rarely happening, probably 15, 16% of the cases. Even less commonly rash and some of these other symptoms that I have down there. Again, let us think about it. Not transmittable prior to onset of symptoms. So even I had an exposure, I come back into this country, I have no symptoms, I am not contagious, I can be with you, I can be in the household with you. All body fluids carry the virus, but I want to say there, blood is probably the most important one, followed by vomit and diarrhea. There is the highest concentration of the virus, or also what we call viremia, is found in the blood and in the vomit and in the diarrhea. The virus quantity increases as a person prolongs their symptoms, usually nine, 10 days of onset, and there's a very nice curve, where people have studied the virus amount in blood of an individual, and they can see how it increases as the person then, either then it decreases and they recover, or they die at that time. Usually, we say, if a person lives to 14 days, there is an increased chance of survival, and you have heard that from our UNMC experts, that's what they said. If the person makes it through 14 days, the body has enough time to really develop those antibodies, to get their strength back to fight the virus, and that's really what it is. It's a fight that the body has. Convergent is then, we have no more virus in the blood that can be detected. Again, you know this, no specific treatment, vaccines are in development, we hear, day by day, we hear about vaccine trials that are going on. Therefore, at this time, intravenous fluids, anti-inflammatories, nutritional support, and you hear some of the experimental drugs that have been used also on our individuals that have come with Ebola into our community. So for us to know, you know, we know how to take care of somebody that has Ebola. This community has shown this. We have great expertise at the medical center. Our EMS people have done a wonderful job. But what about somebody that we don't know comes into our community? That's really my concern at this time, and not an individual who has been identified and flies into the biocontainment unit and to be taken care of there. Early identification and screening, to me, is the most important thing. That's why you heard last week that we developed these three screening questions with 911. The same screening questions will also be used by EMS. Hospital systems in this community have used the screening questions probably for the last week or 10 days. They ask the individuals who make appointments or who walk into their clinics, do you have symptoms? And if you have flu-like, if you have flu-like symptoms, not if you have a broken leg, but if you have flu-like symptoms, what is your travel history? Where have you traveled within the last 21 days? And people say, traveled to Africa. Where in Africa? You know, we hear, we have calls, that people say, we have traveled to South Africa. That's not of importance. Of importance is, have you traveled within the last 21 days to one of these three countries where we know the transmission is occurring at this time, Sierra Leone, Liberia, and Guinea? What we then do after that early identification and screening is rapid isolation of that suspect cases and get them into testing, and then contact tracing and monitoring thereafter. So this again tells you, at three points of entry at this time, besides the airport, this type of screening occurs in our community, 911, EMS, and clinical inpatient and outpatient Now, we heard a lot about airports. These are the five airports that really have implemented some very sophisticated type of screening. 94% of the travelers of these countries are coming through these airports. There are, last week, we heard, there are potentially 150 travelers who come from these three countries into the United States daily, 150. Yesterday, that number has been decreased down to 100. 100 travelers from these three countries arrive in the United States daily. More than 50% of those are US citizens, and only 50% of them are, or less than 50% of them are visitors. Five to 6%, you could say, five to six individuals are healthcare workers that are returning from those three areas. What has been occurring on the national level is to cover and to catch the 6% that travel from those countries into other airports. The airlines have been trying to really change their flight schedule and have everybody fly through those five airports, because you have the custom board protection who is there, who has special stations set up, you have people who are trained there, who know what to do, how to screen these individuals. So what if we identify there is a suspected person? We isolate them as quickly as possible to prevent further transmission, and you see here some of the pictures about PPE. We have heard a lot about it. We have learned a lot about PPE. University of Nebraska Medical Center, or Nebraska Medicine, as it is called now, has developed a very nice video that is being used nationwide now, how to take off and take on dawning and doffing PPEs. So what is our public health, your health department's responsibility? It is to find everybody who has had contact with an ill person. Talk to family, access contact information. We then have, right now, new monitoring guidelines that have come out late last night, that we are just reviewing now, where we actually monitor depending on what risk level that person is at. We may monitor them by phone to check on their temperature. If they are at a higher risk, we actually may need to go by their house and check them to make sure that they are taking the temperature. Isolate anyone who becomes ill quickly. Usually, all of our medical facilities, our emergency rooms, have told us that they have identified isolation rooms if they have a suspect case. Miscontacts can be a source of more infections. That's why you want to be as efficient as you can with identifying these contacts. This is just a graph who really shows you how complicated this contact tracing can be to really identify. You remember, in Dallas, more than 150 contacts were identified at different points, 48 household contacts, all of them were monitored very carefully, and none of them came down with symptoms over that 21-day of observation. That again goes back to how difficult it is to actually get the virus. Communication, I want to share with you locally, what we have done. At the moment, the first individual flew into Omaha, we developed, kind of as a request from UNMC, an Ebola information line. We don't call it a hotline, but it is an information line. The first day when we opened the line, we had 65 calls that day. Many of them in the morning were very angry people, people who wanted to know, why are we letting this person come into Omaha? Who has given, who has allowed this to happen? There should have been a vote of the people, this should have been in front of Congress. I mean, you just can imagine how long that would have lasted. But as the day went on, there were a lot of good questions. There were questions of people who really were concerned, who had an appointment at the medical center, who wanted to know, can I go? Is it safe for me? There was a nice woman who, a pregnant woman, who was going to deliver at the medical center that week. She was very concerned. Could she go and deliver? Until we explained how the biocontainment unit really works, how trained those individuals are, and how encompassed everything is that goes on in the biocontainment unit. Since then, we have opened, the information line is still open, because we see increases depending on what the media reports. We get a lot of reasonable calls, but now also calls from outside the states, because Omaha is being looked at as a little bit the expert, the experts around this. The information we provided on the line is, A, we had one Spanish line, so people called in, and we had Spanish individuals who were answering that line. And we also made sure that the information, specifically in regards to the medical center, went through their PIO first, before we provided that information. We had scripts for our staff, and we started out with 10 staff, and then we were able to decrease that pretty quickly. You saw the news release that we did on the 911 changes last week, and we will do more news releases if necessary. We have now developed an Ebola 101 video that we are going to put on our website, and we have provided that right now to our OPD, our Omaha Fire, our sheriff departments, that they could use it as a training video for their staff, who is probably on the front line, but needs to know more about Ebola, so that they have the correct information for them. We have initial protocols for the initial investigation, so that it goes forward in a very thoughtful manner. We have specific forms that we are using when somebody calls us in the middle of the night, and it happens, I can tell you, every night, that a healthcare provider calls and says, I have somebody in my office who has a fever and has some travel history. And then, we go through the PUI form, the Person Under Investigation Form, and we found that the travel history is not correct, they haven't traveled to those three countries. So the other day, we had somebody who came to an emergency room, and they had just eaten lunch at the neighbor who was from West Africa. When we further checked, the neighbor hasn't been to West Africa since 1999. So there is a lot of this type of work that is going on right now. We then have contact investigation protocols. How do those lists look like? What do we need to follow up, so that we can document everything? Because in the end, I think that's our role, monitoring of contacts. So if we are being asked, how many contacts are you monitoring? How are you monitoring? What does the monitoring show you? So potentially, if you think about, I just did this calculation this morning with staff, it is something to think about. One to two individuals, according to the information we have, potentially could fly into Nebraska, that have come from one of these three countries. I told you, 100 nationwide, and then we are one of the states who has a low population receiving these individuals. So one to two individuals. That means these individuals most likely would require monitoring by us. So if they reside in Omaha, they would require monitoring by the health department, monitoring for temperature and for temperature, and monitoring for symptoms. If they reside in Hastings, they would be monitored by the Hastings Health Department. So you could see this number of contacts over 21 days. That's the time we would monitor these individuals after their last exposure. Could actually add up for us of quite a number of contacts. So we are starting to think through the logistics, how we will go forward with this, and have some pretty good plans in place. We have reviewed our quarantine and isolation authority. In 2007, you have actually, as board, you have approved the authority and the procedures, how that authority would be implemented. You have approved actually an order that we now, the written order is right now at the county attorney's office, we just worked through it again yesterday to make sure. If we need to do forced quarantine or isolation, which means involuntary, we always would use the least restrictive quarantine or isolation, which would be voluntary isolation and quarantine. But if we need to have a process in place for involuntary, we would need to have that order reviewed, and that order will come from the health director. We have participated in national calls, as you can imagine, as everybody else probably in this room. Now, what would I like from you? Because I know Commissioner Boyle always asks, "What can we do for you?" I'm going to say right up front, I would hope you would be a voice to the constituents in Douglas County, that we are science-based, we learn what we, as we move along, that means there may be some changes. I hope you would assist us with policy decisions if those need to be made. I also would hope that you would assure some level of resources if that becomes necessary. For example, I can tell you what we are thinking of, what may be some potential resources. If we need waste cleanup, we now are starting to have discussions with waste contractors in this community. Because if we would need to remove somebody from a household, and that individual would be identified through testing to be positive, that house probably would need to be cleaned. We would need to have waste contractors that would be able to do that. The cost could, we are not sure where that would fall, but that would be one of the items. Also, if we quarantine individuals in our community, there would need to be some guarantee that we would provide them food and other necessities that they would need for their daily living. I think all of us would like to make sure that those individuals would be well cared for, because that's when they actually comply with these orders the best. And then again, back us up for the use of sound public health control measures. I can tell you right now, with all the information that's coming from the other states and governors who have made different decisions, I've talked to the state health department yesterday. Our governor feels like at this time, there is not a reason to overrule the recommendations that come forward from the Center for Disease Control, but that he really would follow those recommendations and would not make more stricter rules for individuals in the state of Nebraska. This is just a quote out of the Washington Post, and actually, this was quoted in the Omaha World Health. I'm just going to end with this. We don't often think of it, but "Our way of life depends on effective and respected public health systems. That's the useful universal lesson of the Ebola outbreak. We all need to work together." You have heard, we have set up a unified command. We set it up last week, actually, so that we can talk amongst us agencies, where our identify gaps, then work on those gaps, and see how we can help together. So that's Omaha Police, Omaha Fire, Omaha Sheriff, the Airport Authority, and the Health Department. Any questions?
Thank you, Adi. That was very good. You answered one of my questions in terms of sanitizing rooms or homes of people that were there, and so we're working on that, correct?
Correct.
And then the second one is, say that, is it true that a person who passes away that has the virus is still contagious when they go to the funeral?
Yes, they are still contagious, but remember, you would need to be in contact with their fluids. So they are contagious if you would do, for example, an autopsy on them. You would actually need to wear PPE. So that's, that's true. And that's why those burial, the culture in those countries is that you wash the bodies. And so remember, these individuals have a lot of their body fluids on their body, on the outside. That's where a lot of the healthcare workers actually have gotten sick, and a lot of the general public in those countries. And we would need to work very closely with the University of Nebraska Medical Center. Those experts would tell us what is the right way to go about this. Hopefully, we never have to handle an individual who died from Ebola in our community. And we also can learn from other states in that. You know, I do want to tell you that those hospitals that have biocontainment units are willing discussion with each other on a daily basis about their practices, how they do work, so they can learn from each other.
Good. Commissioner Boyle?
Dr. Pore, I want to tell you, first of all, thank you for an excellent presentation. And when I joked this morning about leaving the engine running, I didn't know you were going to be speaking, but I always have time. I always have time to hear what you have to say. Always. It's very informative, and it's very useful to the community. So I appreciate the professionalism you have brought to that department. It is just amazing. And you do an excellent job, and I thank you. And I want to thank Commissioner Morgan for bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
I really like the idea of it being put on the video, put on the website. That's, that's really a good idea.
Yep.
Yep. And the voice sits right over there.
There it is.
The narrator of the video.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pore.
We will move to committees. The first one being the budget report. Commissioner Morgan, did you have anything other than the report as presented?
As presented.
Next is the child and youth. There's one item, a resolution approving a contract with Reconnecting for Family Engagement Services, not to exceed $30,000.
Motion to approve.
Any questions or comments? Under Health and Human Services, the resolution and presentation on PBX transition has been laid over. We'll move to Human Resources. First item is weekly personnel report from civil service. That's as presented unless someone has any questions or comments. Weekly CAO report on staff assaults.
Just incident that was reported in the news regarding the deputy who was assaulted in one of the courtrooms. That's it.
Okay. Item three, legislative issues. From our tri-county retreat, I think we can all say that there's going to be a handful of legislative items that I think all three counties can work on together. We did have a very good showing on, at the hearing for the unfunded mandate hearing that Senator Crawford's initiative, and the county commissioners and supervisors really stepped it up. They did a great job. We had also, I think it was a county attorney and maybe a treasurer. So the counties were well represented, and the senators were asked a lot of good questions. One senator was kind of tough on the questions, but it went well. And so I really do think that we will have the ability to work this next coming year with some resolution in some form on, on something with it. So I was happy to see that. Again, we'll try to go back on and review the tri-county, all of the tri-county's legislative stuff, and see where we overlap on items and make sure that we're all on board with those. It was suggested, and I thought it was a good idea from Commissioner Warren from down in Sarpy County, that, that a couple of commissioners that each handle the legislative items in their respective committees and the lobbyists meet periodically during the year, so that we can make sure that we're all still on the same page and working the same bills. And so I thought that was a good idea. And again, if there's any other legislative items that anybody wants the board to take a look at, please get those to Marcos, and we will talk about those. So that's all I have for legislative today. Anything else on legislative? Next is item four, resolution to amend the Douglas County Flexible Medical Spending Account Plan to eliminate the grace period provision, which will be effective December 31, 2014, and adopt the Health FSA $500 carryover provision effective January 1, 2015. And who's going to do the presentation on, or Patrick is? Okay? Patrick?
So this provision would allow those who have flexible spending accounts to carry over $500 from one year to the next and use that $500 throughout the year. So effectively, that means that they could have a cap of $3,000 instead of the current cap of $2,500. That would replace the provision which allows a carryover of unspent funds through only the first three months of the year.
And it's, I think it's a good deal, so I'm glad we're taking this, taking a look at this. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any other questions or comments? Next is the appointment of Don Honig for the county clerk's office, of the county clerk's office, to serve on the Douglas County Pension Committee. Lee?
Mayor's County Board, Lee Lejour, Director of Human Resources, Civil Service Commission, Chair of the Pension Committee. Earlier this fall, we had one of our pension committee members retire, Mr. Lee Behrens. And at this point in time, we have a vacancy, and the Pension Committee has met. And upon receiving a number of recommendations or actually applications from county employees, the Pension Committee would like to recommend the approval of Ms. Don Honig of the clerk's office to replace Mr. Behrens. Don is here with us. And Don has been an employee of Douglas County since 2001 in the county clerk's office. She's held the position of accountant since 2012. She has a bachelor's or science degree in finance, management, and accounting. And I'd like to recommend her, recommend the county board to appoint her to the Pension Committee.
Do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to speak after we vote.
Oh, okay.
On this subject?
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. Briefly, I've asked this in the past, and I know it's never really been resolved, at least to my satisfaction, but that's nothing new. I'm curious about how many employees, employees that we have on the Pension Committee, and I think in the past, it's been expanded at my request several years ago. But, you know, I know that there are managers from various departments, and nothing against their perspective, but I would like to see both union and non-union employees have a seat at the table, because this is such an important issue, including particularly some of the largest departments. And maybe they're already covered. I haven't looked at the list, but, for example, Corrections, the Health Center, the Youth Center, the Sheriff's Deputy. And whether, again, whether they're in a union or not, I just think it's important to have employees at the table. You know, it could, I think it would be beneficial. So I'll just make that comment. Now, that may mean that the Pension Board would have to expand to 23 members or something. I don't know if that's unwieldy or not. I don't know that it is. When I was on the Pension Committee, it never seemed to be particularly argumentative, at least when I wasn't there.
I see a theme.
No. But I thought I'd say before someone else over here did. But anyway, I think it's healthy, and there have been good discussions and so forth. I don't think it's a, it's a group that works together. And that's why I think that if we could expand it and have employees at the table, it would really enhance our, our system and make it even better than it is. And it's really excellent. It's performing very well. So those are my comments and my suggestion.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Comment just a little bit back on that. There are 11 members on the Pension Committee. I know Mr. Boyle has talked, brought this up before. We did inquire with our actuarial, Silverstone Consulting. They said most pension committees are between three to five. They know of some that have seven, maybe seven up to nine. We do have 11 on our Pension Committee. The committee is composed of five designated members, the chief administrator of the, of the county, the chief finance officer, the human resource civil service director, one county board member, a county retiree. And then we have four members from the larger departments of the county, if you will, Corrections, Health Center, Sheriff's Office, Youth Center, two at-large individuals. We have, in our demographic breakdown, we have seven white males, three white females, one black male. In our non-management, there are the retiree and two other employees that are non-management. So that's our breakdown demographics, just more of an informational item for, for the board.
Do you mind, would you, if you can, can you tell us where the two employees are from?
Oh, sure. The, I can give you a rundown of all the members of the commission of the Pension Committee.
I'm just curious about, you went through them all, and then right at the bottom, there's two employees.
Yeah, two employees. Kathy Allen of 911, Wesley Behrens, now would be Don Honig.
Sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Don Honig, our new person here this morning.
County clerk, you mean?
County clerk, yeah.
Okay. All right. So it's 911 and county clerk have employees on the board?
Yes. And then from the Youth Centers, Brad Alexander, Sheriff's Office, Tom Wheeler, Health Center, Jennifer Beishine, Corrections, Mark Fox.
I'm just interested in the people that are not the managers. So I mean, I don't see why we couldn't have an employee from Corrections, an employee from the Health Center, somebody from the Youth Center, and a sheriff's deputy. And again, they don't have to all be union. I just think they need to be the people who are on the street there, where the rubber hits the road, so to speak, the people who wait on you at the treasurer's office, that sort of thing. That's, that's my thinking, just because they have a, maybe they have a different perspective. Everybody's worked together really well. I just don't see that there's any downside to it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Maybe we can have... I know we've had discussions about this matter before. We could do that again. I don't know if it's this Thursday, or do we meet in December?
We haven't decided that. Typically, we haven't, but depending on the items that we have on our agenda.
Why don't we discuss Commissioner Boyle's comments again? Get some input from Mark Fox, Hall and others, and kind of go from there with it. That'd be fine. And if Commissioner Boyle ever wants to come up to one of the Pension Board meetings to talk with us directly to the Pension Board, we could do that. I'd like to see us stay close to that 11, but we can talk about the makeup of the board a little bit. And I've, you know, been on it since I've been here the last almost four years now. So whatever. Okay? And thank you. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Boyle?
What Commissioner Morgan said has made me think of something. I wonder whether we could invite some of the employees that I referred to, excuse me, a sheriff's deputy and, you know, someone from those other offices that I mentioned, the Health Center, the Youth Center, somebody from Corrections. Just invite them, notify them immediately, let them come, and maybe, I don't know, just be there, present. It started off that way, that they don't have to be a member of the board at the beginning, but maybe they never will be.
Absolutely.
But, and then they would, if they have questions, they have access to ask right away, and, you know, I, I just think it would, we'd benefit.
The meetings are open, aren't they? And published?
They're open last Thursday of the month at 9 o'clock. There'll be one this Thursday in room 903.
So how do we alert the employees?
Well, we have to figure out, best way to get that out to everybody. Well, we have to figure out, best way to get that out to everybody.
You could let Brad know from Youth Center possibly to say, hey, if there's an employee, I don't know.
Same with Mr. Turbo from the Health Center and some of the other departments. We could certainly contact them.
Most employees, I don't know whether the Treasurer's Office should be in this mix or not, but I think it'd be kind of nice to, maybe even go even further and say would, you know, with the individual offices that are larger, Treasurers and Health Center, Corrections, Sheriff's Deputy, notify that the Pension Board is inviting an observer who is an employee, please come, and, you know, that they would get time off to attend, that sort of thing.
You could probably just post it to the intranet. That hits the majority of our employees and you just run a little notice that this is when they need.
And then we'll be sure you move the meeting to the CenturyLink main floor.
Mr. Lorenz?
Just one thing I would note about the Pension Committee that I think is important to remember is that any member of the Pension Committee, when they assume that position, is acting as a fiduciary. And they are not supposed to act as a management employee or whatever. They're supposed to take a fiduciary outlook towards managing, managing the pension, which means they're doing what's best for all members of the plan without regards to their personal stake or, and I think that's an important criteria that you always have to keep in mind when looking at a Pension Committee.
And I never, my own feeling, I never, you know, was suggesting that anything different than what you just said. It's just that I would want it to include some more people to see what's going on and have more, more faith and more confidence in the system.
Okay, thank you.
Not that it's lacking, but.
Before you go on, Lee, I did want to at least state that back when we did the consent agenda, Mr. Jude Liu, who is joining our Audit Committee, was present in the chamber. And I thought it was later on and didn't announce him in time, so he left. But he was here and so if those could, individuals on the Audit Committee could tell him thank you and I apologize for the overlook of introducing him. But welcome to our newest member of the Pension Committee. And I hope you enjoy your service.
Well, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to learn just one more piece of how the county operates. I've kind of bounced around a little bit in the county clerk's office to learn a lot of different pieces. And I'm just hoping that this kind of puts the pension in full circle. Thank you very much.
How long have you been employed by the county?
Since 2001, so right out of college.
Good, very good. We're glad to have you.
See you Thursday.
Great.
Okay. Next is the approving a compensation philosophy to provide guidance on the compensation of employees. Mr. Lejeur will do a presentation on this and.
Mayor's County Board, Lee Lejeur, Human Resources, Civil Service. If you may recall, last November, the county board approved the salaries for the elected offices that were up for election in 2014, which is a standard practice, I believe, by state law. And in that process, the, the board looked at how our various county offices are paid and tried to establish a hierarchy order in respect to the various offices in the county. And with that, the county board said, okay, we should be looking at what should be our top office in the county. And I think it was decided that the county attorney's office was probably the top office. And after that was possibly the Sheriff's Office and then the Public Defender's Office. And then kind of went, kind of come down from that. And so the board established, I think, a very good process in just trying to align what we pay our office holders in those positions, not the individual, but the, the people who get elected to those, in respect to a hierarchy order. And then at the county board retreat in March of this year, the county board, we talked about that and also talked about, well, how can we align not only our elected officials, but also our department heads and our employees that are non-union in respect to a hierarchy that reflects the duties and responsibilities, the budget, the number of people managed, all those key criteria that, that go with the responsibility of that job. So what we wanted to do today, after we gave a brief presentation of this to the county board HR Committee a couple of weeks ago, we wanted to provide what we call compensation philosophy that encompasses the, the key factors of how you pay people in the county. And this involves total compensation, not only with the salary or paycheck, but also benefits. And with us this morning is Deb Otwell, our compensation coordinator. And we're going to do a brief presentation on what a compensation philosophy is about, what other organizations, other counties in the country that we looked at. I think we looked at seven or eight. And then what would be a, a good philosophy for the county board to consider in how we make salary decisions, both union, non-union, and as well with elected officials and department heads. So Debbie, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Debbie Otwell, Human Resources. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today to present kind of the development of this philosophy. I will say I'll make this as brief as I can. And if I go too long, Commissioner Boyle, I will put a couple gallons of gas in your car.
I'm never going to make that statement again. I'm really.
You don't have to, you're never going to let it down.
I'm sorry.
We started this, this process in developing compensation philosophy, as Lee mentioned, at the request of kind of the Strategic Planning Committee meeting. And so we, we have to start with the basics. What is a compensation philosophy? And we have a couple, couple bullet points here. It's a formal statement indicating the county's position on compensation. And as I like to think, think of it, it's a mission statement for compensation, if you will. It provides the reward framework. It explains the why behind pay and it assists with us being consistent in our pay strategy. And in developing this, what comprises the philosophy? We have to consider some key factors. The finances of the county, the number of employees we have, our business objectives, our comparable salaries, and our desire to hire well-qualified candidates. And our objectives of the philosophy include a definition of how we will pay and reward competitively. And that is, of course, based on our ability to pay. We want to support the goals of the county's strategic plan and the operating objectives. We want to reflect our values in that statement. We want it to be concise and realistic. And we need to have it adapt to the changes that the organization will weather. We want to attract quality employees to work for us and motivate the employees we have to perform at their best. And we also want to retain those key employees. So some key considerations of this philosophy include having a program that's equitable. We want to make sure it's defensible and perceived as fair. We want to make sure it's legally compliant, that we clearly communicate it to employees, and that when we administer our compensation, it's a fair package, it's competitive, and it's consistent with our philosophy. So rather than reinvent the wheel, we thought we would take a look at other counties and see what they had for a compensation philosophy and kind of use that as a guideline for establishing ours. And as you can see, I've kind of highlighted in orange here, some of the key elements that we saw. And we saw some very consistent things with different counties. The competitive pay is mentioned frequently. Internal equity, a very important consideration. We also see consistency, equity, and fairness. Couple others, and again, a recurring theme, recruiting, selecting, and retaining qualified employees. And we want to make sure that there's a good internal relationship among classifications and employees based on their responsibilities, their qualifications, and their authority. Again, in the next one, you'll see competitive pay and mention of internal relationship and also market rate. In this other statement, we really liked the, kind of that middle section there. The compensation package really, as Lee mentioned, refers both to pay and to benefits. It's not just a paycheck. We want to make sure that we incorporate the benefit side of it too because we have a very strong benefits package. And that this commitment to this wage and quality of life helps in, helps reward our employees and that contributes to the prosperity of our entire community. And you can see the mention down below of the health insurance and wellness and retirement. And we like that and we wanted to make sure to draw that out in our philosophy as well. So on this slide, you will see our proposed philosophy. I can allow you to read it or I can read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. This is our suggested philosophy. Douglas County government exists to provide certain necessary and important services to the citizens of Douglas County. In order to fulfill this responsibility, the county supports a total compensation package that provides pay and benefits necessary to attract, retain, and motivate qualified employees. The compensation package is designed to be compliant with labor contracts to systematically blend a position's internal worth to the organization and its external equity in the market, and one that considers the county's financial and organizational parameters. The total compensation package may include, but is not limited to, pay, affordable health insurance, a wellness program, paid time off, and a retirement plan. The total compensation package should also reflect the ability to be competitive, both short and long term. Any compensation increases must be conditioned upon the current and long-term ability of the county and its commissioners to fulfill their fiscal responsibilities to taxpayers and spend tax dollars responsibly and efficiently. Increases are also contingent, conditioned, excuse me, upon the county's ability to continue the level and mix of services as well as to maintain prudent county reserves. A strong benefits and compensation package for county employees demonstrates our commitment to a sustainable wage and quality of life, which in turn contributes to the prosperity of our community. So we, we ask that you consider this to be our framework, our kind of mission statement in terms of compensation as we go forward. Any questions?
Yes, Commissioner Craft?
Just for clarification, on your slide just before Thoughts, Questions, you have on the second bullet point where you say, "to systematically blend a position's internal worth to the organization." Then my question is on, "and its external equity in the market." Would you define what you mean by that?
Sure. When we looked at the, when we assisted with the recommendations for the elected officials, for an example, we looked at the market being other counties and we looked to see what they were paying. So it's taking that consideration.
That's the market, that's what I was looking for. You're comparing us to other counties, not to private industry.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes. It's, it's a lot to think about. Looks very good, you've done a lot of good work. I asked Marcos to go over to the city clerk's office because a couple of things jumped out at me. One is on, well, the one I want to talk to you about is on other counties' statements. It starts with compensation philosophy, Dallas County, Texas. Down below, you have the, "to administer the pay and benefit programs without regard to race, color, national origin, religion, sex, age, disability, political affiliation, or any other non-job-related characteristic." I asked Marcos to go to the city and ask him to get a copy of their recently adopted anti-discrimination ordinance pertaining to gays, lesbians, transgendered people. I'd like, I am going to bring that to the county board and ask us to include that as a, as a class status that we will not discriminate against. And I think it probably is covered under that other non-job-related characteristic. But I think it's time we, we actually say what we feel, at least that's how I feel. So I, I do plan to bring that to the county board and ask them to consider adding that to this, this paragraph. The other is getting really, I guess, down to the, to the asphalt. What do we do to recruit women? You know, do we recruit, recruit this young lady or did she come to us from college? Do we recruit others in the minority community? You know, do we go to Metro Community College and look for people that are coming out of there as potential employees? I've always been concerned about the, and I, I know we're speaking to get a report annually, but the women and minorities that we have hired in the building, everybody, a lot of people in here should not look like all of us white guys sitting up here. And I know that there's an effort made that, that doesn't, doesn't happen. But I think it adds to the quality of the workforce when we have diversity all, all over the map. It just gives different points of view and I think we get things, we get a better result. So I, I want to encourage you, on behalf of myself, to actively recruit young men and women of color, of bilingual talent, and not, not just Spanish, other languages. I just think it's a real, would be a real asset to the city and I think it's, or excuse me, to the county. I think it would be a good thing to do. Finally, the last thing I want to say, I want to make sure that we're, we're paying women equally. I really am very serious about making sure that we don't have someone in an office that, and I just took a tour of one of the facilities recently and all the men were out in front and the women were in the back. And I made a comment to the manager, I said, you know she's running the place, I hope you're paying her fairly. So anyway, I'm, I think it's just a matter of fairness and equity. It's also the law as far as I'm concerned. So anyway, those are my comments. And I appreciate what you're doing, this is really a good, wonderful statement and I really appreciate all the hard work you did. And my car ran out of gas a long time ago, but that's great. Thanks a lot.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and piggybacking on what Commissioner Boyle said, we as a county government should also be giving opportunities to people with handicaps.
Absolutely.
And that includes our veterans and people who are handicapped for other reasons. We should be helping those with, with, well, when I was in business, I would hire people with emotional problems, I would hire people with depression. It was difficult, but it changed lives. It helped the community. The other thing is, not only should be equal pay for women, but also the minorities. Everybody should be based upon what they're doing and no other conditions, their capability of performance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so do we have a motion to approve this philosophy? And then as we move through the process, we can always add or take away or whatever. But I just think this is, again, one of those strategic planning items that you guys have just hit great spot on and really appreciate the work that you've done on this.
I'd so moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Thanks, Debbie.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good job.
Thank you for your great comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keep it up.
Next is.
Commissioner Morgan?
Oh, sorry.
Motion passes.
Next is a resolution reducing the waiting period for participation in the county-sponsored health, dental, and life insurance plans from 90 days to the first of the month following 30 days of employment, effective for employees hired on or after January 1, 2015. And here to present this is our chief administrator, Ms. Diane, Diane Carver. This is Diane Carver.
Thank you. This proposed resolution increases, or I'm sorry, reduces the waiting period that new employees need to wait before they are eligible for health insurance and other benefits. Currently, the waiting period is 90 days. And HR is recommending that we reduce that to the first of the month following 30 days of employment. The reason for this is to just be more competitive with other employers in the area. And it's coming up now pretty much because I, along with HR, was looking at the Affordable Care Act,
Care Act, which I'm going to talk about next. And under that rule, 90 days is the maximum, so we're at the maximum. And so we were just discussing whether that is something that we, you may want to consider reducing.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion passes.
And the next item is the Affordable Care Act compliance update. And periodically, I've had someone give an update on where we are with this, so we make sure that we're staying in line. And again, Mrs. Carleton has done an excellent job of staying on top of all the things we're supposed to be staying on top of, and so she'll run through the presentation.
Thank you. Today, I'm going to talk about what's known as the employer's shared responsibility rule. It's also known as the employer mandate. And this is just one part of the Affordable Care Act, but it's a part that obviously applies to Douglas County and other employers. So what is the employer's shared responsibility rule? Effective January 1 of 2015, the county's health plan must be affordable, it must provide minimum essential coverage, and it must be offered to all full-time employees, or we will risk being penalized. The county's already established that its medical plans are both affordable and meet the minimum essential coverage criteria as set forth in the Affordable Care Act. Our consultant, Aon, has gone through the methodology to make sure that that's correct as far as our plan structure. But we want to make sure that the county is offering coverage to all people who fit the definition of full-time employee under the Affordable Care Act. A full-time employee is defined as an employee who works, on average, 30 or more hours per week, or 130 hours per month. Now, health insurance is already offered to our employees who work 20 or more, I'm sorry, 21 hours or more per week. But we do have some employees that have been classified as seasonal, temporary, or part-time less than 21, who do not currently receive health coverage because they just have not been eligible under our plan. And so, under the ACA, the county must track and review the actual hours worked of those individuals to determine whether or not they meet that definition of full-time. In order to determine full-time status, the ACA regulations provide a method whereby the employer may determine the status of full-time by counting the number of hours the employee worked in a prior period. And that's known as the measurement period. And then, if the employee is found to have worked the required number of hours during that measurement period, the employee will be offered coverage for a period of time going forward, and that period of time is known as the stability period. Under the law, the county has chosen to use a 12-month look-back measurement period to measure the hours. And the first measurement period that HR decided to pick is October 15, 2013, through October 14, 2014. And HR ran a report using this 12-month measurement period, and they'll continue to do that on an annual basis going forward. And then HR will also have to run a monthly report to capture the hours of those employees that may have been hired outside of that standard measurement period. So last week, or it may have been the week before, the HR department went ahead and generated that first report to see where we're at for that period of time. And the report identified two employees who have worked the minimum number of hours during that previous 12-month period, who previously were not eligible for health insurance, but who will now have to be offered health insurance going forward. And then HR is going to begin generating monthly reports in November of this year. So with respect to those two employees, HR will contact the employees and offer the coverage. The coverage will begin January 1 of 2015, if the employee wants it, they don't have to take it. The coverage will continue for 12 months regardless of the number of hours the employees work during what's known as the stability period, which is 12 months. The employees' hours will again be tracked during that standard measurement period, which is the October 12-month period. And the employee will have to have worked the required number of hours in order to be offered coverage going forward in the year 2016. For new employees who may have been hired outside of the measurement period, HR will also be tracking their hours during a 12-month look-back period. And just like with the other group, if it's determined the employee has worked more than 30 hours per week on average, they will be offered the coverage. Just like with the other group, the coverage will continue for 12 months. And as with the other group, the employee will have to have worked the required number of hours in order to be offered coverage beyond that 12-month period. Veritable hour employees, I just wanted to point out that what, those, that's the group of people that we are looking at here. These are people that you don't necessarily know how many hours they're going to work when you hire them. And it's really important that we make sure that when people are hired, we can have a decision made as to if they fit into that veritable hour employee group or not. So the 12-month look-back period is used to track their hours. But if it can be determined at the employee's start date that the employee is reasonably expected to work 30 or more hours per week on average, then the employer should be offered coverage to begin after any applicable waiting period, which would be the 30 days that you just approved. So this is something that HR and I are going to work with departments to make sure they really understand this, because it's important that when they hire people, they know whether or not they should be offering the coverage after the 30 days. Or whether it's a circumstance where they are a veritable hour employee, and they just don't know how many hours they're going to work, then we will do the 12-month look-back There is an exception, and this is important for seasonal employees. If a department knows that their seasonal employee is only going to work six months or less, then this rule that they need to be offered coverage will not apply to them. So that's specifically accepted out of the ACA. Of course, there's penalties if we do not follow the law, and they are pretty hefty. $2,000 for each full-time employee if just one full-time employee receives a federal subsidy to purchase health insurance coverage because we didn't offer them coverage. So what does that mean? If one of the employees in this grouping, who has not been offered coverage, goes out on the federal exchange and gets health insurance, the IRS will be tracking that, and they'll want to know why that employee had to go out on the federal exchange if they're employed by us. And so what we'll have to show, we didn't offer it to them because they didn't meet the 30-hour-per-week threshold. If they find that we should have offered it to them, then that penalty is calculated based on all full-time employees. So it would be 2,000 times 2,400 employees, which is 4.5 million? Beginning in 2015, there are also some reporting requirements. Employers must report that we offer the coverage to our employees. There's forms that we'll need to fill out to reflect this, and those forms are due in 2016, but they're for the information of 2015. So currently, HR and I are working with the county clerk's office and dot com to implement systems to track the data needed to file those reports. Any questions?
Commissioner Craft?
On, excuse me, on the third page, you use, you use the word whereby an employer may determine the status of an employee as full-time. Now, what that "may" leaves me to believe there are other options of how to determine.
There's two options, really, the one that I just described, and then there's one where you can look on a monthly basis. Instead of looking back 12 months, you look on a monthly basis. But that second option is really for employers who have a lot of temporary-type and seasonal employees. That's not really a good fit for the county. Most of our employees are full-time or part-time. So we picked the first option that I described.
That answered my second question. My third question, you have an exception on, oh, toward the end there. Exception for the seasonal employees, six months or less. What is the exception? We don't have to worry about their hours, or?
That's correct. However, we will still be tracking their hours, because we want to make sure that they're only working that six months. There might be circumstances where, at the date they're hired, the department believes it'll only be six months, but then things change and they keep them on. And so we're still going to be tracking that time, but I just wanted the department heads out there to understand that the seasonal workers, generally, if they're only working six months, they're not going to have to worry about as far as offering the coverage.
So if somebody works two weeks a month, each month for 12 months, is that 12 months, or is that six months of work?
Well, it's done on average. So again, we'll always be looking at a 12-month period, and we'll be looking at, when we're tracking the hours, we're going to do an average. So the six months is a guideline, but again, we're going to be tracking it anyway on an hour, from hour to hour.
Okay. And six months in hours is considered 1,012 or something? Would that be?
Well, there's 200, 2,050 in a year.
2,080.
2,080, so it'd be 1,040 hours. We're going to track by hours, not by months or days.
That's right.
Okay, very good. Thank you. No further questions.
Commissioner Boyle?
I'd like to visit a little bit about the, one of the last things you talked about, the penalties for failing to offer coverage. The, how many employees, excuse me, it's $2,000 for each full-time employee if just one full-time employee receives a federal subsidy to purchase health insurance. And when you say full-time employee, are you talking 40 hours, or what?
Again, under, under the ACA, it would be more than 30 hours per week.
More than 30.
Yeah. So for the county, it's, I don't know the exact number, but...
Is there some way to build in a, some kind of safeguard that we don't fall into that trap somehow? You know, and I, it just occurred to me, I mean, just listening to this, I mean, is there some way to program only a certain number of checks being issued to this person and at the, you know, not exactly at the date where he or she reaches this threshold, but right before that, maybe a red flag comes up and says, you know, you've got to go, go talk to this person and make sure that, I'm just trying, I just am blown away by the fact we could get fined so heavily.
No, it's, it's a great idea, and we have talked with HR and dot com to think about what ways we can flag employees, because they can run reports more often on behalf of the department, or however people want to set it up, to track people's hours. Currently, what we have in place is the 12-month look-back, so that we will know whether the people met that threshold. And then we do have time to offer them coverage. And as long as we offer the coverage, we're okay, we're not going to be penalized. But to track people on an ongoing basis, so we know they don't even reach that level, is something we're also looking at.
Okay. Does this really, does this apply to, I'm a little bit confused on what employees, does this apply to people who are working 30 hours or, or less, or does it apply to people who are working, because that's, I guess, 30 hours is full-time?
Right.
So...
So, yeah, you have to think about, so I'm looking at it from the, from the county. So in our county, you already offer employees who work more than 20 hours a week health insurance.
Okay.
So you might think, great, we're fine.
Yeah.
So, and we are. For that group of employees, people who are currently being offered health and cover, health insurance coverage by the county, nothing's going to change for them, and we are not tracking their hours, because they already have the health coverage, so we're okay. It's the people that are not being offered health coverage because of our own rule where we don't believe that they were eligible, because they're seasonal, they're temporary, or they're working less than the 21. Those are the people we're tracking. There's probably about 350 of them at any given time during a 12-month period. Those are the people we're focusing on to make sure that we offer them coverage if they, if they do meet that hourly threshold.
What kind of work do they do?
A lot of the employees are seasonal workers. You have the BOE employees, those are easy, they typically don't work more than six months a year. We have seasonal employees at the county engineer's office that, you know, do some mowing and that type of thing. But a lot of the employees are also employees that work less than 20, they're called part-time employees who work less than 21 hours, and they're not eligible for coverage. They shouldn't be a problem. They should never be going, they should not be working more than 20 hours a week, because if they are, we'd be offering them the coverage anyway, right?
What are those people doing?
They work at various departments. I mean, there's really, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the number of them, but there's some at the health center, there's some in other departments.
Here's why I'm asking, and I don't know whether it's possible or not, but it seems to me that we would be doing them a service and us a service, because we'd be protecting ourselves, if we were to develop a class of employees that were intentionally floaters that could go from the BOE to the treasurer's office, or wherever it is, but they are hired on the basis that you will be moved around to various offices, so that it, you know, that we don't get in trouble with one of the unions or something, but it'd be a separate, separate group of people that could, could move from one department to the other based on workload or whatever, which would mean that we wouldn't have this, we would reduce our exposure to this sort of thing, maybe. I don't even know if it's practical, particularly if, I mean, you can't have somebody mowing the lawn and then going to BOE, that doesn't work.
Right. And, you know, some of them are nurses. There's, it's the gamut. I mean, they really are.
All right, well, good luck, and we'll visit, visit you in Leavenworth, okay?
Oh.
You're going, you're going to Leavenworth.
One of the penalties is not jail, it's just a monitor. I don't have it.
I'll tell you what the penalty, I'll tell you what the penalty was for this, you putting this together.
And you having to listen to it.
You did a terrific job, but it was a little, my eyes were crossed until we got to this last page. Okay?
I should have started with the penalty.
No, no.
Okay.
You did great.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. I could see where an employee could easily get confused. Now, when somebody says, okay, you've offered, they've reached that 30 hours when they were hired for part-time, but they reached that 30 hours, and we offer them insurance, we're going to have them sign a document, I would assume, that they do not want insurance.
That's right. We're, HR will be reaching out to those employees, explaining what's happening, and we want them to acknowledge that they either want the coverage or they do not. But it, and, and then there'll have to be some education of how long this is good for. It's really only good for 12 months unless they continue to work that number of hours.
Okay. And an employee says, "I'm not going to sign," then what?
That's fine, they do not have to. We just have to show to the IRS that we offered the coverage. We will want the employee to at least, at least sign acknowledgement that they were offered the coverage, so we can keep that for our records.
Well, I know we want to, but what if you have somebody who's just obstinate and says, "I'm not going to sign," are they going to get fired, or?
No. I mean, and, in fact, the IRS does not require us to have them sign something, we would just like to do it for our records. The IRS just requires that we are able to show that we made the offer of coverage.
Okay, thank you. That satisfies me.
Diane, that was kind of where I was going to go, because even if they don't sign a waiver and they go on to the federal exchange, if they haven't signed anything, you know, like a waiver that says, you know, "I'm declining, I was offered, but I'm declining," then all we have is a he-said, she-said to the IRS that, yes, we did offer it, but now they refused to sign, or they refused, they refused the insurance and they refused to sign the waiver. Then that sets us, our liability then goes to this level, because there's no proof that they were offered and denied. So how do we?
We're going to have, yeah, I'm sorry. We're going to have, we're going to have letters that are sent to their address, and in addition to that, and there won't be that many, I mean, this time around, there were only two.
All right.
In addition to that, if HR does not hear from that person, they will follow up with them, you know, to try to get them to sign it. And if they still refuse, I think we can document, you know, dates that we contacted and, and that type of thing. You know, maybe the department could facilitate, you know, whatever conversation needs to occur. But again, it's, it's not a requirement, we just have to show that the offer of coverage was made. We were just going to sell, send them by ordinary mail, because that's all that's required. You know, we could send it by certified mail if that is something that the board wants to do, because again, it's not that many employees.
Right. I think the part that is, I think, going to be even as confusing... Right. I think the part that is, I think, going to be even as confusing is the, that being good for only 12 months. So, say the next year, they don't hit that hourly measurement, and so, then they're not offered the insurance anymore. And I think I asked this at the HR committee, but I can't remember, are they still eligible for the insurance if they pay for it in full, or they're just not offered it at all then because they don't qualify?
I believe because the coverage will be ending, they are eligible for COBRA.
So, they would pay for that?
For a certain amount of time.
For a certain amount of time.
Right.
That's, that I think is going to be the most confusing part for them, is, you know, I have coverage, and then all of a sudden, I don't have coverage, and...
Right. It may. The other thing about this is, we're learning some things along the way, as Commissioner Boyle asked, who are these, who are these people, and, you know, what type of jobs do they do? Some of them are temporary employees, which under our rules, that should only be six months or 12 months.
How much time?
And so, it's initiating conversations as to, seems like this person has been here longer than what was originally thought. Perhaps they should be, become a full-time employee, and that is it right there. That takes care of the questions. And so, those are the types of discussions we'll be having with the departments, if in fact, there are employees that fit into this grouping.
Okay. I just think you've done an excellent job with laying this out and following it, and, you know, there's still more to come, but good job. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, it is, you really did a great job. Thank you, Sam. The, I have a question about some of the, some of the work that's being done, is being done by other governmental bodies. And I'm wondering whether the cutting of the grass and the maintenance and so forth, if that couldn't be accomplished through an interlocal agreement with somebody else, some other governmental body, the city of Omaha, the natural resource district, somebody who's doing that work, not only for the efficiency of it, but maybe to shift the responsibility, to be honest. If we could contract with NRD to do mowing, they're out there mowing all their levees and all those, whatever it is they're doing. And maybe there's some way we could contract with them or the city to shift that. And I don't know what other positions we have, but maybe that's one way to do it. I don't know if it's possible, or if it's something we should explore. I think Commissioner Doot is really in favor of this.
So, he's the one paying $5 billion fine?
I think the key, though, is to remember that we're only talking to employees at this point. So, everybody else, we are ready cover.
Yeah. And I can tell you, they were not seasonal-type employees. They weren't, they were, people categorized as temporary, and they...
But are longer.
Right. They, one was at the corrections department, and one's at the sheriff's department. So, they weren't, they weren't engineer employees or BOE employees.
I see, I see.
But, you know, that could change. Every year, we're going to, we may have a different, you know...
So, if our lawnmowers come into that category, then maybe we'll talk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Amelia. That was really good. Appreciate it.
Now, there is a resolution adopting a policy related to complying with the employer's shared responsibility rule of the Affordable Care Act, and that just goes to an actual written policy that conforms to the information that was presented. Question in room?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes.
We do have need for an executive session for...
Personnel and litigation.
Personnel and litigation. Before we do go in, I'd like to remind everyone that we have a child and youth services committee meeting Monday, November 3rd, at 1 o'clock in room 903, and that the board does not meet November 4th or Tuesday, November 11th. So, our next scheduled county board meeting will be Tuesday, November 18. Please remember that the offices will be closed, Douglas County offices will be closed Tuesday, November 11th, and observance of veterans stay.
When will our last meeting be, December?
The second Tuesday, so the night.
The ninth is the last county board meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And that'll start going on the agenda in November, to remind everybody.
Thank you very much.
Did we have a motion and a second?
So, move.
Please vote. Before we go into executive session, I do, and Commissioner Boyle, you can certainly speak, but I would like to take a moment to recognize Dan Begley.
Absolutely.
Who passed away. He was always such a ray of sunshine when you saw him, no matter where you saw him. And I always got such a kick out of him, because, I know he said this to a lot of people, but he always said I was his favorite Republican, and would give the best hugs.
Yeah.
And he was just such a sweetheart, and again, just always full of life. And I know you knew him well, and you represented us at the funeral the other day, so if you wanted to say anything?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity. It was, of course, those Begley guys are terrific. They're, they are very, very strong Democrats, a lot of fun to be with. And I hang out with a lot of different people that I enjoy, and they do too, for that matter. But it was really interesting, because there was something in the World Herald that was, I'd like to expand on a little bit, and that was that Chip Maxwell is, the Maxwell family is a cathedral family, they're Republicans. And we've grown up with them, you know, and they glow in the dark in our neighborhood, because they weren't Republicans. No. They, the Maxwells are a terrific family. They moved into, matter of fact, Chip's parents bought Sam and Dorothy Howe's house on 38th and Cass, where, and they, Chip, I was giving a speech one time, and Chip was in the room, and so was Dan Begley. And it was, I mentioned that, thanks for being invited, Chip, being invited me, Chip, and I said, Chip, you know, slept in the same bedroom as my wife. And of course, that just, everybody kind of, well, it happened, but of course, it was 30 years later, so. But anyhow, Chip was a guy we got along with too. And Dan particularly had a real friendship, because there was a bond of cathedral people, and people who belonged to parish, and we did the festival and did a lot of things together. And Dan was always there, many times with his derby, always with a smile, always with a beer. And we had a great time. He's one of a kind, and when I'd see him, I would kid him, because he was, because he was a postman. And I think when he left, I think he had number one seniority. But he walked all these neighborhoods, tough ones, big ones, neat ones, expensive ones. And, you know, he talked to everybody, he had, he was fearless, and people respected him. But I'd see him, and I'd say, hey, Dan, what's the zip code for Cincinnati? You know, and he would rattle it off, and I thought, I wonder if that's it. But anyway, I'll remember him always, he was great.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, and Dan was also a very dear friend of mine. He was our mailman two different times, when we were on North 16th Street, and then years later, when we were at 16th and Leavenworth. They were not the same route, and there was a 30-year gap, I think, 25-year gap, something. But yeah, he was a ray of sunshine, and always had that wonderful smile. We love you, Dan.
With that, if we could just take a moment and remember Dan. Thank you.
Thank you, Marianne.
You too, thanks. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Rambler waves of grain for purple mountain majesty. Above the fruited plain, America, America. God shed his grace on thee and crown thy good with brotherhood. From sea to shining sea.